...for the first time ever, I believe, live from the Central Theater. So we will start with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we're going to start.
We are going to start with the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Welcome back to a new school year. We've had a very smooth start, a good beginning. I just wanted to introduce you to the new administrators on the administrative council, which is the district leadership team. So we have Mrs. Friedman back here, she's waving to us. And Ms. Friedman is our new preschool director, replacing Mrs. Albertelli, who retired last spring. Lisa's actually been in the district quite a while. She was a special ed teacher for us for a while, then the professional development coordinator and elementary student services department head, and we're excited to have her in this new role. Not with us tonight, but I just wanted to mention, we have a new MECO director, her name is Latifah Frank, and we've restructured that position a bit. Latifah will be joining the district leadership team. She comes to us from Lincoln, where she was the MECO director since 2011. Prior to that, she was actually a principal in Boston. So we're very excited to have her as well. And I also want to introduce you to Isha Tariq, who is our student representative to the school committee this year. Mr. Bevan shared a little information about Isha with me. So he reports that in addition to being a very strong student, she participates in musical theater and akakoa. She was the co-captain of the tennis team for the past two years, and in her spare time writes poetry. In fact, she was the winner of the first ever Westwood High School Team Poetry Slam last year. So we welcome her to the committee, and we look forward to your contributions. Awesome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to give you a brief update on district enrollment. Putting the chart up here. You know from our July meeting that we made some adjustments to our elementary sections when some interesting things happened with kindergarten. And so we decided in the summer that we were going to put a K-1 section in at Deerfield. We had higher than expected kindergarten numbers there. We actually have lower than anticipated kindergarten numbers at Hanlon. So this is what we decided to do, and that seems to be working quite well. Because we didn't need a second kindergarten section at Hanlon, we were able to split the grade two into three sections, which is something we've been keeping an eye on during the spring. One other sort of area of concern that we looked at was we have a singleton grade two at Deerfield, and it increased a bit. It's at 24 now, which is two over guideline for grade two. And so we decided that we would put an instructional assistant in there for some additional support. So generally speaking, things look good. We do have a couple of sections at grade three at Martha Jones and Downey that are one over the guideline, but I've been in touch with the principals. That seems to be, seems to be fine, and everything else is within, within guideline. So that's where we are. And of course, October 1 is what we benchmark for enrollment, so I'll provide you a class size enrollment report for that.
That's probably one of the best enrollment lists that we've seen in a long time.
Good-looking church, yes. So that's enrollment, and I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. So we did get some feedback from parents, a couple of parents at the middle school about our communication or lack of communication around screenings, our postural screening that we do with students in grade seven, I think. No, six, I'm sorry, grade six, grade six. And that unfortunately fell off our radar, but we have looked at that, we're going to be on top of that in the future. And it also sort of brought our attention to the fact that the school committee policy around screenings really has not been looked at in quite some time, and doesn't reflect what we're currently doing with the addition of Esper, for example. So I've asked Abby to look at that and bring a draft revised policy to you in the future. We're also looking at the timing of the screenings. We think that even if we were communicating about them, it might get lost in the shuffle if we're doing them the first week. So we're going to look to push them later, later in the year.
Is there any mandate that we do them at the beginning of the?
No, you just have to do them within the school year. So particular grades have different screenings. And then, of course, I have been communicating with parents about the triple E risk, and we're approaching that just as cautiously as we can. So we've been adjusting the end times for our outdoor events, and I continue to consult with the Board of Health. It is their strong recommendation that, given what's happening in neighboring communities, that we be concluding our outdoor activities early. So we're going to continue to do that. And finally, I just want to mention that on October 4th, the district administrators are having a coffee for anyone who is interested in attending at 9:00 a.m. at Hanlon. We did this a few times last year. It's fun to meet people and sort of hear what's on their mind. So we will be out again in October.
Is that for all of the schools?
It's for every, anybody in the Western Public Schools is welcome to come, but we rotate around, so this time we're at Hanlon.
Good.
Great.
Any questions for Emily, any thoughts?
Okay, great. So the next section is we're going to go kind of to what I'm calling, it's a new, if you can see here, we revised a little bit the order. I thought we'd try out, I felt that sometimes the school committee piece got kind of lost at the end of the meeting, so I revised a little bit of the order here, and we thought we'd try it out. So the next piece of the meeting is a number of subcommittee and liaison and other kind of logistical items. The first one on that is the building project and community engagement plan update, which I think Giuseppe and Maya have generously agreed to be part of that group. I'd love to hear an update on that.
Sure. So the building project update, where we are right now is we are in the architect selection process. We had issued an RFS for the architect. We got, I should say, the MSBA issued an RFS. We received eight responses, so we're in the process of reviewing that response. The review team is made up of Emily, me, and Nancy Hyde. And then the way the process works, this is different from the OPM. The MSBA actually has a design review panel that makes the decision on which architect we go with for this project. As you recall, the OPM was purely a district decision made mainly by the, a subcommittee of the school building committee. That is not the case for the architect. The district, the design review panel is made up of 16 members. We have three seats, it's the three people I just mentioned. The other 13 are appointed members by the MSBA. We will meet October 1st as a panel, and at that meeting, the chair of the panel will go through the proposals and the firms one by one. At that time, we are, of course, welcome to give our thoughts, give our opinions on each one. It is an open meeting, so the public's able to attend, the architects are able to attend. And as I said, the chair goes through each proposal one by one. At the end of the meeting, everybody votes, and the vote is whether to take, to interview the top three candidates, or to just start negotiating directly with the top candidate. So we'll see what happens at the end. It depends, I think, on a number of factors, particularly how far ahead of the pack. If one is way, way far ahead, there may be discussion about whether just to skip to the negotiation. If there are some that are fairly equal, we'll probably bring those in for interviews. If we do the interview route, that will occur within two weeks of October 1st. And at the conclusion of that meeting, after the interviews, again, we do a vote, and I think the panel then decides which architect we're going to start negotiations with for the project. Clearly, it's not going to be a district decision, it's a panel decision, but from what we understand, the panel gives a lot of deference to the district and who they think they can work best with, because clearly, it's in everyone's interests, since we're working primarily with them, that our opinion's taken into account. So that is, so all that said, we expect to have the architect on board by mid-October. That's the goal. Hopefully, that will happen. Which leads us to the second piece, which is community engagement. A flyer is going to be going out shortly.
This week?
Next week. Oh, next week. Informing the public of these community engagement sessions. Basically, what we've done is, is we're having two sets of community engagement sessions. The first one is what we're calling an initial information presentation and feedback session. There's going to be two of these, October 23rd and November 4th at 7:00. Both of them are at the middle school cafeteria. The purpose of these are to present to the community, the design team, our owner's project manager, the architect, and the rest of the team, and also to review the school building process and give an update of sort of how we got to where we are, sort of remind everyone where we started, and update everybody with where we are now. And finally, we, the community, us, we're going to participate in breakout groups to discuss project priorities and what people feel are important in the new school. And that's ranging from everything from amenities to education needs to site selection, and we'll have sort of guidance on, on that feedback session. But really, that's just an opportunity for the community to tell us what they think about this project. So that's the first set of meetings. The second set is the education plan presentation. This is when, this is December 9th and December 12th at 7:00 p.m., again, at the Thurston Middle School cafeteria. Both sessions, like the first, will be identical. You can come to either, you can come to both. In this meeting, it's more of a presentation to the community. We're going to identify the project priorities that came from the first set of meetings. We're going to review what is our, what the school committee has come up with as an education plan, which is essentially a roadmap for how are we educating children in Westwood. And we're also going to talk about what the next steps are for the school building committee. So we're getting closer and closer to a project. Next spring, we don't have the dates yet, but next spring is when we're really, we're going to have the community engagement sessions where we actually start talking about what the project looks like. I think that'll be really interesting to people. So this is a lot of information, an opportunity for us to get feedback and move us into the next phase of the project.
So the second two meetings will pull information from the first two meetings, right?
Yes.
And that, you know, we want everybody to come to those meetings.
We would love everybody to come, especially with a feedback session, so it's really everyone's opportunity to really...
This is their chance, right? To get us the information that we need.
Not the only chance, but it's to get in from the start, so yeah.
Yeah. May, you've done a great job.
Thank you for all the time you put into this.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a great committee. I think we're working well together, and so far, so good.
And this will be led, the first two sessions, by our project managers, correct?
Yeah, we're still debating. The project, the compass, the OPM will certainly be guiding us. We're not sure if we're going to be leading the sessions, or if he and his team will be, maybe a combination, yeah. But it will be a guided feedback session, it's not...
Not a free form.
Not a free form.
So the flyer that's going out, how is that going out, and how's that?
Well, so we'll be distributing it to blizzard via social media, but we're launching it next week because we are literally going to have hard copies of it at our curriculum night, so, you know, at all levels. This is an elementary building project, involves everybody at that level, but this is about, this is relevant for all residents, and so we encourage everyone to participate. So we will be promoting it a lot in the next couple of weeks, and of course, as we get closer to the dates, it will be something that...
And the newspapers as well?
The newspapers will be doing everything we can think of, yeah.
Good. Any other questions?
Okay, so I think up there, I made some of the liaison final assignments. I made a few tweaks. Over the summer, there were a couple additional things that came in. Carol agreed to be the reservation working group on that. I think the select board assembled, so I may have moved, I think, oh, actually, I've got paper versions. I think I moved one or two here and there, but these are, I think, the final assignments for this year. Okay, good. So the next one, meeting format and timing, I talked about the format. The other piece is, I think you've seen some of the communication on, is, I think this is going to be the last month of our paper distribution. We're going to move to electronic distribution with hyperlinks like John has done here, and I think Steve and John are working on some type of technology maybe.
They're going to bring our laptops.
Yeah, so I don't know what, we'll figure that out, but iPads, okay.
Oh, we will?
Yes.
Wow, okay then. Great, all of you.
So we move forward. I'm going to miss having those people come Friday afternoon.
I know, it's always exciting.
Good, next final piece, any...
The only doorbell we get all week.
I know, it's the only doorbell.
Final piece is just a general new business and updates. I know Charlie, you had one or two things you wanted to talk about in particular.
Yes, just a couple of things. One is, I just put it around for everybody to review. I know certain people don't like this, but the Boston Magazine is out doing their rating. Usually I bring it up, is I hear from a lot of people say, you know, we're paying a lot of money in this town, and so anyway, I'd just like to share that. This has just came out this past week, and it ranks Westwood the 14th best high school in Massachusetts. It also ranks us higher than other competitive systems like Brookline, Needham, Boston Latin, Newton North, Cohasset. So it's really, so I partly wanted to just share that with you, and also to thank our administration and our teachers, for that's where the work comes from. And also, I've included the gentleman who does all the rating, and so, some of the numbers in here, I just like, it's worthwhile checking to see are they correct. I don't know where they get them, but they rank, you know, how many students per class and all that, so I kind of like to see that he's coordinated with us, but it's really, I think, quite an achievement, and I want to congratulate everybody for getting us at that level. The second thing I just wanted to share with you was the, I just passed around, I only have copies for everybody, but this is Judith Ciati, who lived in Westwood and used to paint scenes all around the town for many, many years. She's retired up in New Hampshire, and she gave her a whole collection of paintings to the Westwood Historical Commission, and they've been on display at the library all summer. And the historical commission would like to see if the school system would like to take seven of them and put them in the different schools with a little description of Ciati and who she was, and who she was here, and then maybe rotate them around so all the kids could get to see them. So I just share with you, we'd have to select which ones we want, but if we do want them to go, we need to set up the logistics of picking them up and getting them there and rotating them. There's more than just seven, but, you know, some of them are kind of just a house, but there's some beautiful ones, moving of buildings, some of the really iconic scenes in Westwood. So I just wanted to say that the library's program is just about at an end, so it's now an opportunity for us to share with our kids who are interested in that. This is a lady who, how she was trained, what she did, in addition to Tom Dunley giving exhibits, et cetera. We have some wonderful artists in the town that hopefully we can share with the kids and help them learn from us. So those are just my two comments. Thank you, Toni.
Great, we'd be happy to do that.
Any other updates? Yeah.
I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Donahue, who's receiving an award this week from the Charitable Irish Society in Boston. He's receiving the Silver Key Award. It's an award that, you know, it's, I think they have three recipients this year, and one of the past recipients, maybe last year or the year before, was Marty Walsh. It's a highly prestigious award. It's an organization that helps immigrants coming from all countries now. I think originally, they were helping people who came from Ireland, and now they're helping all immigrants who need maybe housing or money to maybe get back to their original country if they have some type of family crisis. They do wonderful things. So Charlie, this is a terrific accolade for you, and you deserve it. He does so much for everybody, but I know you're very active in that society.
About eight years ago, I became proud that the Irish, who once had signs in Boston that said, "Help wanted, no Irish need apply," and a know-nothing party that was a party in the 1850s when they were coming here to stop Haitian, let loose a disease at the time where they take up the disease called hate, and they hated blacks, Jews, and Irish. And so, you know, the Irish now look back, and other immigrants says, you know, "Let's share with us." So it's a, I'm honored because of my work, I thought was behind the scenes, I didn't realize, but it's, and there is a group, I don't know if anyone has noticed it, last week, or about a week ago, the administration just said that the medical deferred action system, where kids were being treated in Boston for life-saving illnesses, were given a 33-day notice to be deported. And the physicians have said they'll die if we deport them, so this, the group that the Irish International Immigrant Center is the one that brought it to the attention of the nation.
Really?
You know, it was on TV, national TV, educating people that this isn't right, you know, this is, we're picking on little kids who, so anyway, there's a lot in Boston going on now in the immigrant area, and I know one of our programs last year, the student, it was the program that we do in June, the students had the chance to visit and learn in Boston, who were the groups dealing with immigrants and helping them. So I think we've been trying to educate our own kids through the J-term about what's going on, but thank you, Giuseppe.
Well, congratulations. Well deserved.
Yeah.
Good, anything else? Okay, great. The next part of the meeting is public participation. Public participation is an opportunity for members of the public to have comments or questions. Those questions or comments should be addressed to the chair. We don't engage in discussion, but we will get back to anyone who has a question or feedback. So is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment tonight?
All one of them?
Seeing none? Seeing none, we will move on to discussion items. The first discussion item is the district improvement strategy and goals.
So I don't have a lot by way of preamble here this evening, because we just talked about the district improvement strategy at our June meeting, but I just wanted to note a couple of things that have changed since then. So in that discussion about our district priorities, we got some input and feedback from the school committee, and so over the summer, the administrative council went back, and we made some revision updates based on that input. So I would just draw your attention quickly to a couple of things that had changed here. So this priority 3.1 about develop and implement a district-wide plan for meeting student social-emotional learning needs, we also added and physical wellness there, which I think is a great addition. And related to that, then, when we think about the specific action steps associated with that particular priority, we have two action steps down here that came out of that discussion in June. So we intend to form a committee this year to begin examining the viability and logistics of a later secondary school start time, and what the impact of that would be on the elementary schedule. Toni and I have talked about that. We think this fall, we obviously have a lot of work to be doing around the building project, but in the spring, we anticipate that we'll get that committee going. And then, of course, I just want to highlight that in our K-12 curriculum review cycle, this year, we are conducting our wellness review, review of our wellness program, so I...
How many? Is that Abby, is that your?
Nope.
No?
Allison.
Okay. No, there's, I was, I was thinking of your review that you're, are you starting a review this year, too?
So we have an audit?
Audit.
Yep, yep, they'll be here in February.
Can someone, I didn't mean to jump.
No, that's, so that's the, that is an audit from the state, and they come in every six years.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It is a big deal, yes. So that was just one change I wanted to bring to your attention, and then we also had some discussions at the school committee about technology and kind of how kids are navigating that technological environment, and how parents can be involved in that. And so, you know, you can see in your packet that we do have this priority 3.3, and we've really thought about some of the input we heard here in terms of determining the action steps that are associated with that. And then finally, of course, this fourth objective, which is about facilities for the future, and so clearly 4.1 and 4.2 are going to be very relevant to the work that the school committee is doing this year. And so for each of those priorities, we've tried to articulate what we think the action steps and the deliverables are for those, for those things. So we made those adjustments, and then from this district improvement plan, I've articulated my goals for the year of superintendent. I'll load the rubric that comes from the state, and it is somewhat unwieldy. And so typically, what we do is we have some discussion to say, well, what are the priorities, and what do we want to focus on, and from that, I derive my goals. So I, mostly, they come directly from this district improvement strategy, because this is the real work. There is also something called a professional practice goal. So you'll see in there for my professional practice goal, I've identified completing the NSIT program, the new superintendent induction program, and it may be the third year of that program, and I do, again, want to thank the committee for your support. It's been a very important and useful program for me, so I appreciate that. So I'll finish that up. For the student learning goal, I've tied it to this goal around meeting student social-emotional learning needs and physical health, because I will be working on that committee, and we have a new SEL coordinator position this year, so that feels particularly important. And then for the district improvement goals, I have highlighted the facilities goals, because that's what we will be working on together.
Great.
So with that, obviously, there's a lot here, and I won't go over it all, but we're happy to talk about anything else.
Charlie, you have a question?
The 3.1, which is the issue of social-emotional learning needs and entry-level plan, the, at the MECO program last year, the kids get up and they said, they come to Westwood in the sixth grade, they've left behind all their friends, they're new, and then a few said, "Somebody came to me and said, 'I'm your friend.'" It was really very nice. So I don't know if every kid has somebody coming to them, so I've seen other systems where they have like, kids who volunteer, like student, they're ambassadors, and their job is somebody, either a MECO kid or just a new kid to the town, that an effort is made to welcome them, you know. So I don't know if we do that, or if it could be done, but I just thought it would be, you know, for the kids, the MECO kids who didn't have anybody, found the first year, you know, very, very difficult because they had no one come forward, something like that would be, I think, creative if we could do it. Now, if we're doing it, I apologize for bringing it up, but it's, I think it's a nice piece that could be added to entry for teachers, too, you know, just for new kids.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I'll speak to Latifah about that. We have a history of having host families. Mrs. Donahue was one of the first host families for Boston resident students, but I have to say, I don't know what the status of that program is, so let me talk to Latifah about it.
I think it faded out over the last few years, but I think there's a lot of interest in reviving it.
Yeah.
So, and I think we have a great new leadership at the middle school, and they're very excited about it, too.
Yeah.
But it was impressive that night.
And there is, there's an induction program for the new Boston students that's still running and very active, so there's an opportunity for them to get a preview of the school, meet some other kids, meet faculty, so they're not walking in cold the first day of school, and that's proven really helpful. Correct me if I'm wrong, were there other new students, too?
All new students.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Sleeping on your couch.
Yeah, which is how it was the first year, too.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, so Mr. Bevan is just clarifying for us that running start, which is... start, which is what we call this induction program, is open not just to Boston students, but anybody who's new to Thurston. So if you're moving.
Oh, that's great. That's a good idea.
Great.
I have a question. I think, I think we've been talking about alignment between the different levels since I've been on the school. So what's different, Mr. How are you going to do it to make it actually work?
Uh huh. Well, we're glad you asked. So we, we talked a bit about, so this was a priority we talked about last year. And we think that it is connected closely to the, what we said here about promoting coaching and peer observation. So we are very committed to coming up with structures where people can get into other people's classrooms, get into other buildings, and really see firsthand what's happening. And then Allison's doing all kinds of things with curriculum leadership, vertical teams.
Yeah. I mean, we started last year sort of putting together teams where the elementary, middle, and high school leadership get together on a regular basis. And what that did is it really facilitates that visitation between the levels. And the best thing that we found isn't what necessarily what happens in the review. It's what happens sort of afterward when people get out to visit each other. So I don't know if you remember, there was a graphic I showed you last year of the science department and all the different places they had visited at the high school. And that was kind of internal to the high school. We also did that between the elementary and the middle and the middle and the high schools. So there was a lot of interconnectedness. And interestingly, it's not always the grades that are adjacent. So it's not necessarily just fifth to sixth grade. In the case of science, it was fourth grade, seventh grade, and 10th grade where the bio sections were. So people who had similar content concepts. And what they're trying to see is kind of how far should you push the content in grade four so that you're teeing up the grade seven but not repeating yourself over and over again. So that's the work that's going on.
So if I had to say what's different, is that's what you asked. So I think in the past, when we've talked about curriculum alignment, it's really been at the level of like curriculum maps and documents. And here's what we say we're going to do and here's how the semester is unfold. And there does need to be some of that. What I think is different right now is that we are creating ways for people to then really see what's happening, to debrief and talk about it, and to make it, you know, not sort of theoretical about what's on the curriculum map, but to sort of bring it to life and think about everyday practice. And that feels different to me. And we're getting good feedback from teachers about the impact of that.
So are these things, I mean, I know you guys are very busy and you get bogged down with so many things during the year. But are these things already scheduled so that you make sure that they happen? Or?
Yeah. I mean, so we don't, we don't have set days yet. What we do is the, and what worked really well last year, the leadership teams, once they get together, they kind of work on coordinating schedules. And we have to figure out kind of what's the priority. So last year, it was a lot of science, a little bit of math, and a lot of English. This year, we're going to be really looking at social studies because that's the, that's what's in the spotlight in terms of curriculum review. So.
Thank you. It sounds good.
So on the, on the social studies?
Yes.
When will that review? Is that review done or is that?
No, that's, that's just getting ready to start. Yeah.
I'd love, and probably in the spring, whenever that's, I don't know what, that's on our plans with meetings. I'd love to hear more about that. And I know it's been a lot of press.
Yeah.
It's a headline, so.
It's exciting. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask, what is Primary Source?
I can tell you about that. Primary Source is an organization, and actually, I think it's in Watertown still. And it's really a professional development and curriculum material organization, but they do excellent work. They're really, really strong. And we've been excited. I wrote in a different memo, I think, we sent our eighth grade social studies team, because the eighth grade course is really transformed from a strict U.S. history course to a civics course, they ran a summer kind of boot camp for eighth grade teachers from throughout the state to look at how do we make that shift, but also how do we gear up for civics engagement projects? Because the MCAS is coming in social studies, but it's not going to be a pencil and paper traditional test. It's going to be a project-based learning opportunity. So it's kind of cool.
Cool. Great.
I think one thing we had talked about last year was that last year, we were implementing a social and emotional coordinator or coach. And I think at the time, we had said, we're curious as to what this coach does and how it's working. And at some point, we were gonna, we talked about maybe having a presentation on that this fall, just to sort of give us a summary of last year and how it went and what worked well. Is that?
Well, the position is new this fall. So the person...
Oh, I thought it was last fall.
No, it was just in last year's budget. We did the review last year and we got it into the budget for this year.
Oh, okay.
So the, our new SEL coordinator, who is wonderful, has, she's been doing an entry process the last couple of weeks. And she's about to spend a week in each school, I think.
Yeah, she's going to embed in each of the elementary schools and maybe a couple of weeks at the middle school because it's bigger, really to do a very comprehensive kind of scan of what's going on. She's meeting with key staff members, but also doing open forums. She's going to try and schedule some parent coffees and get some parent input. So I think after that, she'll have a nice grounding from which to sort of start to do coaching. But she's already kind of doing some interesting things. She met with Lisa and the preschool staff for the first professional development. She's meeting with our new teachers. So she's up and running. And we'd love to have you meet her later in the year, I think, once she's got a little more sense of the place.
Great.
Great. Thanks.
Anything else on the goals? So do you want to talk about anything else in the mission or?
So let me, yeah, let me just clarify. So, so under action items is sort of the annual approval of the district goals and superintendent goals. But then in addition, what I noticed is that in the school committee policies, we actually have three policies that are called mission statement goals and core values. And they just haven't been updated in a long time. And so all I've done really is just to take the policies and make them reflect what is here. I mean, the core values, I think, were from like policies.
I think so too, yeah.
So I just thought it might be timed a bit too.
Okay.
Yeah. So it'll be the first read of those.
So do we waive the reading?
Yeah. So I think what I thought we could do is do the annual approval of the district goals and superintendent goals tonight. And then it would be the first read for those three policy statements. And then I'll bring it back next.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next up is the review of the summer program.
Great. So, yeah, as you know, it's a very busy place here over the summer. We've got a lot, a lot done. And you have some short memos from the folks at central office about what happened in each of their realms, summer enrichment, summer curriculum, our extended school years, special ed, technology, and capital. We weren't going to present on them other than Lama is going to show you a couple of the capital projects and talk about that. So before I turn it over to Lama, I don't know if there are any questions about any of the other.
So we don't have enough. Is there a recommendation on the tuition or is that going to come back just during the budget cycle?
It could come back.
It's going to come back.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be as significant.
Okay.
When, when you say that, I noticed that some of the classes you had problems with because people registered and then didn't show up. Anyway, are these classes open to anyone or is it just residents like Westwood?
I believe it's Westwood residents, but we also do have people who teach in the program can bring their kids.
Okay.
Which is a nice benefit.
So should we talk about capital?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So let me slide this one. Slides here. So you can see.
Yeah. So I was, it's been fun for me with the launch of the school year, just to see the suspense, especially in the first few days of getting these buildings ready and seeing the product of summer's hard work. So a lot of credit goes to the operations department and to Ken Aries for pulling off all of this work. And the first photo you see is of the, is of the middle school elevator, which I know has been in the works for some time and was originally funded in the R-19. It's now finally inspected and in use and it looks great. So that was an important asset for our middle school. Another important project that happened this summer, we squeezed in at the tail end of summer, but successfully pulled off, was a change of locks at the high school. This is affecting high school classrooms. And the intent, what you can see up there in the image is that the locks are really now easy to use for teachers. Whereas in the past, it might have been a little bit more clunky and difficult for them to fumble and find a key. We wanted to make sure that that was something easy for them to do in the event of a lockdown. So.
And that's from the, that lock is on the inside?
It's on the inside of the classroom.
So does each teacher lock the door after, after they, have the kids come in? Is that how it goes?
Well, so this is...
Is that the protocol anywhere?
That actually isn't the protocol. But so the, because then kids couldn't come in and out.
Right.
The rest, we'll say. But really what it is, is that in the event of, you know, an emergency, that the teacher could instantly lock the door. And so, you know, this particular lock, we worked with fire and police and, you know, identified it.
I have it if you want.
Oh, you have it.
Pass it around too. Yeah, I have a sample.
And so we've installed them. And it was something that teachers have really communicated was a concern. So I just want to clarify that, you know, this actually was a fairly significant project. And it was funded from that appropriation that came from the supplemental appropriation for the town related to security.
Exactly. Yep. So this is one portion of a number of security measures we'll be taking. And so this is ongoing work. Some of it will happen during the course of the school year. So there's, I think, one final photo, but many other things that happened this summer too. But this is, photo you see is a high school caving project. And this is a good shout out in the sense that it was budgeted at 100K, came in under at 75K. And we're also able to put in the bump and the crosswalk, which was requested by the high school for, just for additional safety. So nice positive change. Other highlights, we installed a lot of ACs in our schools. These were also prioritized through the district based on a number of variables, including, you know, how hot the room gets during the school year and also the student needs. So that was completed this summer. We had some that we needed to add that weren't previously budgeted, but we needed to add at the Downey to accommodate student need as well. Let me see what else I've missed. And then, of course, the middle school HVAC project is ongoing. We were able to install 10 UN events, or not yet, we were able to order 10 UN events. And we were able to complete this steam hot water conversion. We do have to, we do plan to in order another 22 UN events to complete this project. So there's a lot of work that still has to be done on this. But it is well underway.
Are all of our summer programs in air-conditioned spaces?
Not all of them.
No?
The majority. And we, we purposefully plan the locations to maximize access to air conditioning. Yes. I want to clarify. So Abby's speaking about extended school year special ed programs. And so a lot of those are located in air-conditioned spaces. The summer enrichment program, which is at the middle school, you know, not so much. But, you know, we're working away at air conditioning those classrooms as well.
What's the percentage? Do you have any idea of all the schools being air-conditioned?
I would say it's less than 20%.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. It's not, not much.
And the 22 UN events they're ordering, that's for the middle school or for all the schools?
That's just the middle school.
And once those are in, what percentage of the middle school will be?
That, that completes the UN conversion at the middle school. The 22 plus the 10 that we've already ordered.
So everything will be air-conditioned?
So at that point, that's UN events, that's a heating system. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The ACs, we've patched in the middle school where we've needed it most of them. Work in progress.
Can I ask you something I should know? We didn't air condition this whole building before.
Well, so Ken might actually be able to answer that. So my understanding is there are spaces in here that are air-conditioned. And then there are spaces that have sort of a cooling system, but it's not air conditioning? Is that correct, Ken? At the high school? Sorry, you're like, don't know that you're presenting. At the high school, the, the classrooms are not air-conditioned, but is there some kind of a cooling?
Here at the high school?
Yeah.
High school is chilled by a chiller that's out and back. And basically what we do is run cold water through the pipes and blow air, air over them to cool the space.
How effective is it?
It's, it's, we chill the water down to 40, between 40 and 45.
Okay. On a hot, hot day, is that pretty good?
Yeah, it works.
So not air-conditioned.
I remember the conversation and I don't think we could afford the air conditioning.
Right.
I think we did central office though.
Central office is air-conditioned, yes. I, I will admit that. And we appreciate that in the, the hot days.
It wasn't as hot in those days.
Well, we justify it because we're still working in July.
One other thing I should probably flag, the electrical upgrade at the Deerfield was something that was intended to be done. But we, in quoting that project, we realized that the work was much more significant than we imagined to get an upgrade at that building. So what was $30,000 in budget would have cost us potentially up to $90,000 or $100,000. And we just couldn't afford it within the allocated budget. We were able to put an AC there anyway, but we are maxed out at the Deerfield at this point. And we postponed any further action until any, until future years.
Do we need to do it, given that building could be offline in a few years?
It, it, you know, maybe something we have to review. I mean, we didn't take any action partly because.
Because of the cost and for just that reason. But it is related. I mean, our ability to air condition the Deerfield, if we wanted to go in that direction, is connected to the electrical system, which currently wouldn't support it.
Exactly.
And the 60, the grant money was for the elementary lock or middle school?
Yes. So we did get, as you recall, we got the security grant for $60,000 from the state. It was fantastic news. Unfortunately, you know, they said the grant was going to be awarded in May, it didn't get awarded. And then they made the start date for the, in order to access the money, something like mid-August. So we are currently preparing to start dealing with some elementary issues using those funds.
That should happen very soon.
Okay. So any other questions?
All right. So that's the summer programs. Now we go to Maya's favorite annual topic, the 2020-21 school calendar.
Calendar. Okay.
I'm sure you have.
Okay. So I have a draft calendar for your review. And I would point out two things. So first, next year will be the national election in November. And so we have committed to shutting down for the national election because the assumption is that the polling places will be particularly busy on that day. So what we are proposing is that we make that the all-day in-service for teachers. So the district will be open in the sense that the adults would be here, but the kids would be at home. So that would be November 3rd.
And that would happen here at the high school, right?
And.
The in-service?
It doesn't always happen at the high school, but probably.
What about parking though? If you don't have it at the, that's the issue. Because if you have, if you have the in-service on the day of the election and they have, if you have it at the schools, they're going to need their parking.
The in-service almost always happens here. So we can certainly make sure that it does. And so therefore, you'll see that November 30th, which is the day after Thanksgiving, where we traditionally have done the in-service, we would just have school.
Okay.
Like always.
Wait a minute. What'd you say? Thanksgiving?
No, no, no. After.
The Monday.
The Monday after.
You're going to have school?
Yeah. We usually do PD, but we would have school.
So we did.
And we did it last time.
Okay.
So.
Is that okay with the other people?
Yeah.
We did it a couple of years ago. I mean, it's, it's actually hard to have that Monday as a holiday.
Very hard on the hockey team.
I was just thinking for people who are traveling. But I guess maybe not that many, whatever.
I mean, people need to be back at work that Monday.
That's true.
So it's tough for working parents.
Our staff is always back. It doesn't impact them.
Right.
Yeah.
Though election day is not a great day. But anyway, none of these days is great.
None of the days are great. That's true. And then I just want to point out, because, you know, last year, we had a lot of discussion about adding both Yom Pohor and Rosh Hashanah to the school calendar. And I don't want people to think we've taken it off of the calendar, but Rosh Hashanah falls on a weekend.
Yeah.
In 2020, 2021, which is why you don't see it on the calendar here.
And there's a four-day weekend for, Yom Pohor and Columbus Day off.
There, there is. It ends up being a four-day weekend. Yeah, exactly.
That's what I noticed.
Right. So with this calendar, that makes the last day of school Friday, June 18th, assuming no snow days. And if we had five snow days, that would have the school year ending on June 25th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? And then you'll, if we're presuming we approve it, then do you still work for the professional development days over the next few months or two?
Right. Yeah. So we typically, we approve this and then we post it for people so they can see it. But then it takes us a while to get.
Okay.
We should just point out that this has a starting before Labor Day.
It does.
Way before.
Which is, which is good. I mean, that's the policy we put in place. But just, I just wanted to point it out because a lot of people.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this was sort of a pivot year because you can see Labor Day is the latest it could ever be. Next year, it's September 7th. And so students will come back before Labor Day, but have the, they'll come back on Wednesday and Thursday. It's still September, September 2nd and 3rd. And then we will take the 4th off, make it a four-day weekend.
So summer ends early next year.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
It's great. Okay.
Okay. All right. Next, next up is the biannual review of the concussion policy.
Yes. So we are required by law to have a concussion management policy. And we do. It was first put into place, I think, in 2012, is my recollection. And then we're required by law to every other year, review the policy. And I have to send something in certifying to the state that we have it in place. So I put the policy in here. I did have our athletic director, or athletic director, I'm sorry, athletic trainer, Paul Lilla, who really does a lot of this concussion management, review the policy. And he tells me he thinks it's working well and doesn't require any change. I thought I would bring that to you. And I did just want to bring to the public's attention that if you, I have this up here. But on our athletics page, the athletic trainer does have a webpage. And there's a tremendous amount of concussion-related information here for people to... a tremendous amount of concussion-related information here for people to take a look at. It really explains the whole approach, it talks about the consultation agreement we have with Dr. Neil McGrath, who is one of the really preeminent experts on this topic, and explains about the impact testing that we do with students who are in contact sports. So, it's all here if people are interested in reading more about it.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Ellie, the site is so comprehensive, you know, it's unbelievable how much stuff is there. And I know we send out notices to parents, summaries of information. I don't know if it might be helpful just to make a note in the general information that we do have a concussion policy, it's available, if you want to look at it in detail, just to alert, you know, people who have kids out there who, who aren't going through the incredible detail that we have, but I think it might be just, give them a heads-up that there is something here that you can get into. The weeds are there if you want to look at it, but for people who don't go to the weeds to start, and I think it might be helpful.
Okay, great, I'll talk to the AD about that.
Okay, can I ask, a little, did we have any, I've been following this in soccer a little bit where we've had to do a bunch of this year, did we have any implications of the, what's it called, the federal law and state sports law? Is there any implication for our coaches or anything? Because we just had to go through a whole managerial, you know, managerial reporting training, I went like a 90-minute, like all soccer coaches. So, I didn't know if there was any implications.
Not that I know. I mean, we already have a bunch of training in place that's required by the MIA, but, so I don't know. But I can check on that.
Okay, just curious, yeah.
I'm curious now.
Go ahead.
I'm just talking about the calendar.
Calendar, I'm looking at this approval of 2021 calendar. Don't we usually put it out there before we approve it?
I know that we did last year because there was that question about the flu holiday, and so, I remember at that time that we discussed.
I think we always do.
Do we?
Yeah, why? That's my memory. You think so too?
Yeah, I think we would just say this is our, this is the calendar we're thinking about, and then the next month. I mean, after.
Is that a problem though? I mean, I think the reason we're talking about it so early is so people can make plans. Is that enough of a period of time for them to make their summer plans?
I mean, yeah, I guess. I just, I'm just curious, are we, are we not voting tonight on it because we want people to be able to review and comment on it? Is that why?
Right. That, well, that's what we've done in the past, up to you guys.
It doesn't, doesn't have to be. I guess, is there anything that you think might be controversial or worth questioning? I mean, I think the only thing that would come up is the Monday after Thanksgiving, but I think a lot of people, probably new people won't even remember that.
Right. And the, and the election day, having the election day off, but, I mean, it is what it is, we have to do that, right?
And it's not like we're really going to change it, so maybe, and we have.
Vote on it, yeah.
Maybe we just vote on it.
Yeah.
I think what we've done here is very much in keeping with what we've done before. We haven't gotten a piece of the past about it.
So, I know we jumped to the, to the concussion thing, but do we want to vote on the calendar?
I've got an under-action item.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah, we should have just some discussion.
Okay, that's right.
Okay, anything else on concussion?
I'm moving things along.
Come on, you want to be out, but anything else on concussion, any other question?
Nope.
Okay. Good, now, we will move to action items.
Right, that's right.
The, jumping ahead, now, approval, the first one is approval of the district goal and superintendent goals. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, Ellie, I think this stuff that you want to throw, we're worrying, it, it's, sometimes it might be valuable just to share with us what you've picked up from, you know, this whole process, because it's just wonderful. And then, the second thing, are there opportunities for you to continue to learn from others? You know, do the superintendents get together to share new ideas, and is that an ongoing process after you've been through this program?
Yes, and so, I imagine that next year I will be coming to you to ask about whether or not you would support, for instance, instead of paying for this program, some other kind of professional development like that, a JABA-like group or maybe some coaching.
Right.
A leadership coach, something like that.
I think that's a good idea.
Would be great.
One other point on the district improvement on the next generation of students who want to be learned. Every year, I kind of ask about this idea of surveying our past students, who might be of five years or three years, of what do they now realize was great at Westwood? What did, what helped them? What did they really learn? Or are there things that they've picked up and learned from others that we didn't have? I mean, just that whole idea of evaluating, I mean, kids have gone through our program, and now that, I know we've been collecting emails to contact people, and just kind of see where might that be and what might be ready, and then you start working on questions that we might want to ask.
Yeah.
But I think it'd be valuable source of feedback for us to, you know, look at what we're doing well and what we might do better.
I agree, and a couple of years ago, we worked with some folks who did this at Endicott College, and we did develop an alumni survey, and we actually piloted it, but we didn't have emails then, we didn't have a good list, so it was just sort of like, you know, would anybody be happy to fill out the survey? And what they told us was that the responses that came back, we, the sample didn't come back such that we could get anything that was significant from it. But we have the survey and it's ready to go, and we have a mechanism for doing it. So, once we have kind of a list to send it to, that is sufficient.
Did you do it from this last graduating class?
We collected their emails.
Okay, so perhaps by, in the spring, might we get something from whoever's?
Yeah, so I will have to go back and loop back with the person that we were consulting with. I mean, he's a statistician, and there, there needs to be a certain number in order for the results to be considered valid and all that. So, I'll loop back with him and find out.
It might be helpful too, if you could share with us again the questions to see if there's things that, you know, we might, we might want to find out about, but you know, what, how could we approve of the survey instrument based on things we might want to learn and, and maybe, you know, through asking some of the students, you know, what would they like to learn from graduates, you know, so we can, in our first couple of cuts, get the most creative questions asked.
Yeah, I can do that.
So, we had a second. All those in favor of approving the district and superintendent goals? All right, unanimous. The next action item is approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous decision. The next action item is approval of the concussion policy. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. The next item, so I think because we have a formal subcommittee on the community engagement, we have, by open meeting laws, we have to vote to approve the subcommittee, and that includes May, Joseph and Maya, people from administrative staff as well, and a bunch of other people.
Your people.
Yeah, so, is there a motion to vote to form the building, the building project community engagement subcommittee? Is there, yes?
So moved, sorry.
Is there a second?
Charlie.
All those in favor?
Trying to give someone else a chance.
All those in favor?
We can't do it.
Aye, all right, unanimous. The next item is approval of the minutes from the July 18th, 2019 school committee.
I'll make a motion.
Does it, motion approved? Do I have a second, Charlie? All those in favor? Aye, all right. Finally, I think this is something we have to do every year.
Yes.
Is approval of the superintendent as the district representative to the tech board of directors.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Okay.
This is a record.
So, so I think there's a, is this a new procedure or is that, do I have to do a roll call? Is that a new procedure?
It's, it is what is required.
Okay, okay. Let me just go back to read the, give me a second. So, the motion is to move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and to discuss the deployment of security personnel for devices or strategies with respect heretofu, and not, and we will not reconvene in open session.
Oh, my gracious.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I think we have to do a roll call vote. So, Mr. Downey here.
Yes.
Mrs. Potkin.
Yes.
And it's Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Downey?
And I must want his eye as well.
Thank you, everyone.